Good evening, everyone. It is 7:12, and I will call this special work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. Our work sessions are very informal, and we go directly to the items that are on the agenda. We don't have Zoom this evening.
I don't know that I have an answer to that. I don't know if they got it working.
Yeah, we still have some technical problems, and so this evening we don't have Zoom. But all of the information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. So the first item on the agenda is the Financial Management Plan Review, and our CFO, Jenny Rhodey, is presenting. Ms. Rhodey, floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. We're here tonight to review the update of the Financial Management Plan. It was first put together last year for the 2023 budget process, and as we kick off the 2024 budget process, we want to review that update and see where things are at. Really, it's kind of the beginning part of the development of the 2024 budget. It really is a broad tool that really helps inform us, kind of where we're at and where things are at since we adopted the budget in the fall. Two things to also note, in terms of the final tax levy resolution, the FMP does include the non-binding levy increases in this plan, and they are working. And for 2024, that plan levy increase is 7.63%.
Jenny, before you move on, maybe just a couple of introductory comments. My apologies for interrupting you.
No problem.
First, I want to thank the leadership team for being here. The mayor commented shortly before we reconvened that it's nice to have everyone at the table, and I certainly do appreciate the leadership team's time and energy that we've already put into the budget, and you being here representing the operational interests of the organization. Obviously, the strategic and tactical work that happens throughout the organization is exactly what we're talking about, funding. So I really appreciate the group doing this together. We really started, or kind of re-continued, is that even a word? Last year, we really started to make-
Continuing.
Continuing, thank you, Mayor. That's what I was looking for. Continuing the tradition that we started again last year with the team really being involved and looking at the budget holistically as one of the most important strategic tools that we work alongside you to develop and ultimately look for your direction on. As Jenny said, the FMP is a budget planning tool, right? So tonight's introduction to the budget process really is kind of how is the tool working? What does the 10-year planning window look like? And I'm both very grateful and excited about the work that's happened with the FMP. This is something different. We are deeper into the financial planning of this community than many of our peers, and we believe that that is an important hallmark of who we are and how we're doing business. So certainly appreciate the council's time tonight as we kind of walk through, as Jenny takes us through the FMP. And she already mentioned the plan's working, which is also a good thing. We're incredibly optimistic about the future. Jenny and I have spent hours in this plan together, along with the leadership team, and we're very hopeful for the plan's continued success into the future. Just a couple of reminders, Jenny will talk with you a little bit about the specifics of the budget calendar that was introduced back at our half-day annual work session in early February. But a couple of key points, just a reminder, between now, the mid to end of March and September, we have a lot of time, not only to be discussing the budget, but you will also hear from each member of the leadership team with a presentation this year on their department's strategic plan that really aligns the council's strategic priorities with the leadership team's playbook that we've introduced this year, really about the high-level work that each department will be doing. We're also going to be updating the organizational analysis. We talked last year about making sure that organizational analysis was a living document. We talked in February with you that that document this year would include some more content, so not just the staffing analysis that it really began as last year, but also integrating our total rewards or our compensation planning as a second component, and also integrating the service inventory that we did last year. So it is my plan and our plan every year to keep those kind of three elements updated and kind of growing along with the needs of the budget process. That will bring us to September 19th, where you will be asked to adopt a preliminary levy. Just by way of reminder, for you, but mostly for the benefit of the community, that preliminary levy is your maximum property tax levy. Said another way, it is the maximum amount that you could possibly levy. You can't go up, but you can go down. And then from that point in time, we have a couple of additional months between September 19th and December 5th, where you'll ultimately adopt your final property tax levy, your final budget. So we've got months ahead of us, and I think the good news for tonight is the plan's working. We know that we still have a lot of information to get in front of you, both for the 24 budget, but also for planning years beyond 24. And Jenny will talk fund by fund, or specific initiative by initiative, through the FMP of when we plan to bring that back to you. So with that, my introductory comments became far more long-winded, as per usual. Thanks for bearing with me. Also, just by way of reminder for the community, our tradition of opening up kind of is transparent and open communication as we possibly can. We've got our 2023 budget portal up and running, so literally you can lift the hood and look at every dollar that we're taking in or spending, and that is on our budget landing page, burnsvillemn.org/budget. And we also are continuing the tradition that we used last year. Every time we talk about the budget, our slide decks, our staff material, and these conversations are all linked in one place. So whether it's the community wants to see a slide deck or see something specific about the numbers, or listen to our conversation, it's all right there at burnsvillemn.gov/budget.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. First, I'll just review what's in the Financial Management Plan in general. This is a multi-year fiscal plan for all of our tax-supported funds. It integrates existing debt, our capital improvement plans, planned future debt, along with those capital plans, some moderate tax-based growth, as well as future operating costs, assumptions around those. It really assures that all capital maintenance and staffing needs are met and are sustainable. The tax-supported funds that are included in the Financial Management Plan are the General Fund, EDA Fund, cable franchise fee. We've got forestry, our capital projects funds, facilities, parks, equipment and vehicle, IT, Infrastructure Trust Fund, street revolving, our Improvement Construction Fund, as well as three of our enterprise funds, Ames, Gulf, and ICE. The utility funds are not included in this particular plan. Some assumptions, we just wanted to review kind of what our assumptions were as we put this together. One of the number-one assumption is really to maintain compliance with fund balance policies. It does include FTEs per the org analysis to the General Fund. What it doesn't include yet is what Greg mentioned, really incorporating those comp study numbers, some shifts to the org analysis, as well as service level inventories, but that will be part of the process as we move forward and come back to you with those discussions. A 2.5% increase in revenues is assumed, as well as 3.5% increase in expenditures. And all capital projects are funded per their respective capital improvement plans, as well as the most, you know, assuming most recent project estimates as we have them. Bonding included is really the bonding as presented in the 2023 budget document. Some pending information, data, and studies that are currently outside of this, not included in this Financial Management Plan, are the municipal facility projects, compensation study market assessment, as well as parks, system, and facilities inventories. That information, those studies and that information is pending, but we do have plans in the budget calendar to come back with discussions on each of those items. Certainly, the CIP will include information from those parks and facilities inventories, and we plan to have that discussion in July. And there'll be a full list of the meetings at the end of the presentation. Tax levy trends. Here is tax levies as projected. It does incorporate those non-binding annual levy increases as a place to start. Inflationary levy increases are included after 2027 at about a 2%. That's just a place to start from. And in 2024, just want to point out, there's a 7.63% increase. That equates to about a $9 per month increase for the median value home. Included in the plan are the org analysis positions. In the General Fund, there were new positions, 37 new staff positions over the next five years, 12 in 2024 at approximately $1.1 million, 12 in 2025 at about $1.3 million, and 13 in 2026 at $1.3 million. These remain unchanged from what was presented in the 2023 budget at this time.
I think an important note there is that the current organizational analysis shows those FTEs. There is the outstanding work that we still have going on. So we're, the Actel Group, along with the Police Department, will be back with the police study that's been going on in terms of staffing. We don't have those results yet. The conversation among the leadership team is, you know, these are the positions as they've been presented, and as we do our strategic planning work, we will update and not only make sure that these numbers are most efficient, but also most effective from an operational perspective. So there likely will be some movement up or down here in the planning window with an intention to be true to what was originally recommended in the organizational analysis, this sort of total of 56 FTEs. We'll deal with the operational realities of if that changes or not as we go through either additional studies or department strategic plan work.
Okay.
All right. The first fund that we'll talk about here is the General Fund. Preliminary 2022 numbers were coming out better than expected. Now, those are preliminary. We are currently working on finalizing the 2022 numbers for audit, so there may be some changes, but we expect these to generally not change substantially. Revenues are higher by a substantial amount. Expenses are also under budget, down by about $900,000. Future projections do show stable fund balances. As you see in these early years, we do have a higher percentage of unassigned fund balance. And as we go forward, you can see that green line there dip lower into that 50% to 60%. Those were planned. We are still going to maintain fund balances within our policy, but that was a planned spend down. That original, those increases in those early years really are helping us to fund those new positions and the operational impact of the organizational analysis.
And this slide's a really good reminder, sorry, Mayor.
Finish, and then I'll go to Keely.
This slide's a good reminder that the FMP in the budget is a snapshot in time. So for, either for your curiosity or for the community, revenues being higher by $4.3 million, that sounds like a lot of money, because it is a lot of money. A reminder that those revenues include all of our ARPA funding. So that money, as you recall, the council designated to essentially use fund balance over time. You see that, the line kind of dipping into the fourth and fifth out year. That's as we spend that ARPA funding down to operationalize the budget, and then you'll see the line kind of correcting itself within our policy parameters between 40% and 50% at the levels of planned expenditures. So you'll see that although that number looks large now, it's a good reminder that that revenue has been programmed to essentially offset levy pressures and operational costs or revenues that were lost by appropriate uses of those ARPA funds, those federal funds.
Okay. Dan?
Thank you, Couts. You said, "I'll go to Keely."
Yeah.
You haven't done that in a long time. I actually have to throw it back. Can you explain what the 4.3 is? It's not ARPA, right? This is the, because we knew that was coming, right? What is the 4.3 made up of?
4.3, it's generally speaking, revenues had positive results across most, really most revenue streams, and we did have some increases in charges for services. We did have increases in intergovernmental revenues, as well as, I think we mentioned at the half-day, that we did have an increase in investment income, too, that we were able to achieve, so that was helpful.
Can you give us a breakdown of what that is? I'd like to understand where that all came from. That's huge. We don't normally sit in a budget meeting and go, "Well, revenues came in $4.5 million higher than expected." I mean, that's, we're usually dealing with a million or less, right? And this time, it's dramatically bigger, and I appreciate the savings. I mean, it's always, it's not an unusual story. We usually see savings every year against the budget. It can vary from 200 to a million. So 900 is a story we've seen before. 4.3 million in revenues is not a story that we have, you know, previously unforecasted.
Yeah, and I do expect that to come down slightly once we have final numbers on some of our, in preparation for audit. I mean, these are preliminary, so I do expect a slight decrease from that 4.3. Did you have a comment?
I just would reiterate that it does include all of the revenue that we're, 2022 is accounting for all of the federal revenue that we're taking in under ARPA. So, and we certainly, we can provide that breakdown for you, Councilmember Keely, but it does include all of those federal funds.
Right, so we, but we knew that was coming, but we didn't incorporate it into the budget. So it's still looked at as, hey, it came in higher, right?
Yeah, 2022 is the first year that we recognize, and Jenny can correct me on this, but 2022 is the initial year that we recognize those revenues on the books.
Right, as part of our forecast, or?
It's part of-
Part of the higher than what was budgeted. In other words, is it the, is it part of that 4.3 that came in higher than expected? Because did we, did we not count it as expected? Or did we? I guess that's my question.
I believe it was, we knew, we did count it in the, as expected, fund balance. I do think it may have impacted revenues differently. We have, based on how we need to present it for our financial statements, but we can certainly get you-
Yeah, all the more reason I'd really like a breakdown of what that 4.3 is, right? I mean, in reality.
Or the other is that, did you account for all of the lost revenue? Because that's what ARPA funds were supposed to do, was to account for all of the lost revenue, and if you haven't done all of that, then it stays at 4.3.
We can certainly provide that breakdown.
Yep, we can. One thing to note, too, I mean, we do have, it is, there is some increases across other revenues. One thing that's not part of our budgeted General Fund is our market value increases, decreases. So that is not in that 4.3. So that will be an adjustment when we come to financial statements, just so you know that. I want to be completely transparent on that. Certainly, for this year, it will be a loss, much like it will be for, I think, every city. Probably that holds bonds, being that the interest rates increased so dramatically in the past year. But that is not, right now, included in this budget. We don't budget for that because we don't expect to realize that. We hold our investments to maturity, so we'll get, we will get face value for all our investments. But it is something that will be an adjustment as you look at the financial statements.
Okay.
Certainly, it'll give you those details, and these numbers will move as we get further into the 2023 process, or audit 2023, excuse me, 2024 process.
Just a little overall preview of overall capital projects. In the 10-year window that this plan covers, we do have about approximately $250 million in capital projects over the next 10 years. Certainly, those first four years include what was budgeted in the 2023 CIP. The projections for 2028 and beyond are estimates, and we do have assumptions in there for those. You'll see two years, 2025 and 2026 are larger. That 2025 represents that $26 million placeholder that was in the Facilities Fund Finance Plan, and the 2026, I'm sorry, I'm, I think that's 2026.
It is.
The 2026 number is the Nicollet and 13 placeholder and the Ray's grant for that. So that, just kind of wanted to point out those two large years.
Any questions, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Couts. You're budgeting for when it's going to be spent, built, paid. How would that relate to when that project is actually being constructed? Is it going to be in the same year, or could it, in fact, a lot of the construction start in 2025?
27 is when it, 27 is when it's slotted for.
It can spill over. We try to capture the year we think a majority of that happens, but with capital projects and with our project accounting, we do know there's some upfront cost. If we think the, if we think the timing will change, certainly in projects that are out, you know, we will move, we will trend, we will move those and adjust those as plans change, but that's where we thought, where we thought it would be in the fall.
Sure.
And we do look at that every year as we put the CIP together.
To Madam Mayor's point, has that moved at all from a date in the last year? Did it move from, because there was a statement from a transportation projects standpoint not long ago, the three bridges on I-35, the off-ramp at 42, and 13 and Nicollet were all falling in the same 2025 year, year 2025. But, you know, has the 13 and Nicollet shifted to later?
Yeah. 25 and Nicollet, according to looking at federal funds, and you can correct me if I'm reading the information incorrectly, is 27 is the built-out. If we get all of those funds, it's just trying to cobble all the money together.
But it's a construction window time of not 2025, but 2027?
Seven.
Okay, well, that takes one off the table in this bunched-up year of lots of transportation projects going on in the city of Burnsville, because the three bridges on I-35 that you and I are involved in with the visual aspects of, and the off-ramp, I believe, are all forecasted for 2025.
Yeah, and we're hoping that we'll get the federal funds, because 35W is a federal highway, and so part of those funds will come from the federal government and also then from the state. And I think we have a small, if you remember, a small portion of that.
Only if we overspend on visual. And we're not, we're staying within the budget.
Yeah, yeah. Jenny?
Yep, we'll move forward. We'll start out with our first fund. This is the Infrastructure Trust Fund. In the 2023 budget, property tax levies were reduced for 2023. We did bond in 2022 for an infrastructure trust-funded project, and that really allowed for some additional cash flow. And we, so we were able to reduce that levy for 2023. Now, those will be built back through 2027 with annual, after that, I think, 3% inflationary increases is what we've got, what we have slotted in right now. In terms of MSA, this fund receives both property tax levy and also accounts for MSA-funded projects. We've got an allocation assumed at about $2.4 million a year from MSA. And right now, going forward, we don't have any bonding recommended in this fund, and we do try to keep about $2 million in here. You'll see where the arrow is, there's a year, well, a couple of years where we dip just below that. That's normal for this fund, and we just like to make sure that it's scheduled to recover. As you can see in the out years right now, we are planning for sufficient fund balance. In those out years, I think we've got programmed in just placeholders from 2028 and on.
And 26 and 27, the IFT is way below.
Yep, so we do dip below, and that's common, and we have had that happen a number of times. We look at the long-term funding in this fund and just make sure, you know, if we look at it and it looks like it's recovering and we know we have funds, but there are just years where we do have more spending on projects. And you're just, the cash, the cash flow does dip below it once in a while.
I haven't looked very closely at the CIP on those years and see how many miles that we have programmed for 26 and 27.
Madam Mayor, we can take a look at that if you want more information.
It's okay, because I know one of the things that Ryan and his staff continue to look at is how many miles that we have to do. But it's not just the stuff above the ground, it's also all the stuff below the ground.
Correct. And the below-the-ground is funded by those utility funds.
Yeah, utility funds, yes.
Yep, and with the nature of the projects that are in this fund, you just have years where you do have heavier projects, and you have years where you have lighter projects. So that is why, as you can see, like even in 2021, we dipped below, and then we came back. And so as long as we have a long-term plan to keep this funding going in the right direction, those dips aren't too concerning.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and, yeah, that speaks to that. The Facilities Capital Project Fund, this fund, we do have, as I said, we did include that $26 million City Hall police placeholder, as was included in the budget. We did include an estimate for bonding, and that is currently funded through franchise fees in this project, as our annual debt service amounts for the municipal facilities that we've constructed in the last couple of years, Fire Station 1 and the original police remodels. So that, right now, is all funded through franchise fees in this fund, as are currently at the current level. In terms of where we are going forward, we know we've got municipal facilities projects that we're looking at through pre-design, and we will have a more thorough analysis of that in the future, in the coming months, once we have those numbers.
We expect to be back to you by the June work session, not only with results from the pre-design process, but also a-
Bless you.
An analysis of, or a menu, per se, of options to potentially fund those needs, should the council be interested in moving those projects forward. And at that point in time, then, we can, we will literally bring this fund back to you, and we can, in real time, kind of show the impacts of potential timing, other debt coming off, new debt coming on, and how we might fund those things. I will say, just as a preview, I'm optimistic of how we might be able to appropriately kind of leverage timing and perhaps a modest way to feather some of those needs in, both during the 10-year planning period and potentially beyond. So I do think that there are options as we continue our work. Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking June for that, right? Okay. Need a little bit more time.
The Equipment and Vehicle Fund. Over the next 10 years, we do have a property tax levy of $1.6 million in 2024 with 3% increases annually. Potential bonding in this fund include equipment certificates, and there are some equipment certificates planned for 2025, about $1.3 million, and 2026, over $1.6 million, and a smaller number in 2027 of $400,000. Those are for mobile command center ambulances and fire trucks as we move forward, really to keep the cash, the fund balance, above a recommended level. We really do, at this point, need to program those certificates in. We'll certainly look at that as we move forward, and as we look at our CIP, we'll definitely take a look at that. We always try to reduce bonding when we can, but right now, in terms of keeping this fund appropriate- But right now, in terms of keeping this fund appropriately funded, we needed, those, those amounts needed to be included.
I think this is another reminder that this is a planning tool, this isn't the budget. It's my, it's my general preference to come back to you with options that wouldn't require us to, to issue debt for this type of equipment. We've needed to because of timing and, and just general levy pressures over the course of the past year. Jenny and I, along with staff in each of these areas, will work diligently to identify efficient and effective alternatives. Fact of the matter is, fire trucks and ambulances are getting more expensive. If we can potentially offset some of that reality by, by saving interest or debt costs over the course of time, certainly that's the preference.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Keely.
When you say potential bonding, are you talking about state bonding or?
No, equipment certificates. This would be, this would be debt that you would issue at the local level.
Well, I read a post of a, of one of our current House members. And in their list of things that they are asking for bonding for, at the Capitol, included things that appear on our list, like a new fire truck for one and a half million or whatever it might be. Have we thought about asking our legislative representatives to carry bonding requests for large expensive items like that? I know that we recently went to them and were asking for bonding for some other things. But do we have a threshold of what we generally would go to the state for versus try and do ourself? I, I know it seems to vary by city, but these, most of the items in that list were all for Savage. And I don't know if the city of Savage went to this representative and said, hey, would you advocate for bonding and help us pay for these things? Because they're, they're big, right?
Yeah.
They're a million and a half for Mobile Command, or, yeah. And a million and a half for a pumper and an ambulance. They're, they're big dollar numbers.
Big-ticket items.
And I just wonder if we have, maybe should explore that, since it appears cities around us are exploring that same thing.
Yeah. I think one of the things is that we're going after $160 million for digging hall. And that
That's a regional problem, that's not just
I know it, but it, it is.
It's a state problem, really.
It, it is, it is. But we're the ones who are carrying water. But it is, so, and, and that's a combination of both bond and cash.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, it's 160 million to clean up the frigate landfill, that's garbage that came from all over the metro area, right?
We should.
Yeah, but I just think we might be not asking the state to help. Because I, I want to point something out. We send, the city of Burnsville, because our, our commercial, industrial, and our retail, we send a lot of money to the state. And we currently do not get, or do not have, a local option sales tax. We don't have a mechanism to get localized taxation, so a ton of money goes to the state. So I think it's fair for us to go to the state and ask for things like, we need to do, you know, we need four or five million for these equipment capital expenses. Why aren't we asking? If Savage's and other cities are asking, why is Burnsville feel like we have to pay for it ourself?
Because we've always been conservative. But, you know, it's time for us to probably go to the state and ask for their partnership. Greg?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Keely, I think it's a great question. Frankly, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with the asks that Savage might have made. It is, it's not congruent with our understanding of what the, the state is interested in, in, I will use the term loosely, partnering on. However, I think that, yes, any creative and all creative solutions are on the table from my perspective. I, I turn to Chief Johnson, if you have any off-the-cuff response to that. I, I don't have anything in particular.
Chief?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, my understanding as well is, you know, the state has started to get into bonding for fire stations, if they can show a regional impact in the last couple of years, but they haven't gotten the equipment and vehicles. And I think, my understanding is a local representative wanted to show some support for a community. And those things were thrown out, thrown out there, but I don't know how far they will go. I would just say
Asking is one thing, getting is another.
Yeah, I realize, so. I would say we, I keep a pretty close eye on what goes through bonding. And I've never seen anything
With equipment.
Like that, rolling stock, equipment, anything like that. I think the state made a, opened the door on the fire stations, which they had never done. They had been in training facilities and they did a couple outstate in the last three years. And there's a lot of asks for those, so I think this year will get a better sense. But I have not heard from any of the bonding folks or that, that they want to, that they want to open the door to any more of that. But I, I think, to your point, what you ask for and what you get are two different things. And I, I would say, I feel like between Lockridge and, and our staff, we keep a pretty close eye on, on what those opportunities are. And we would jump on those if we saw that there was any ability or any potential ability to help fund our needs.
Well, and you can imagine, if you're a representative or a senator, generally you respond to what your communities are asking for.
Yep.
And, and when one community out of the entire state asks for something that is not, may, may be usual and customary in that vein, probably doesn't get a lot of attention. But when more and more and more are asking because of, you know, we all have budget levy pressures, we all have circumstances that are making it very difficult. And especially because we can show how much money goes to the state that comes out of our community, I would like to be one of those that's starting to add to that larger and larger group saying, you know, these, these fire trucks are a million and a half, that's a big expense, right? And, and it is a regional benefit because our fire trucks go outside of Burnsville into our surrounding communities. Granted, they all come into ours too, mutually aid. But I would just make the case that it, sometimes we should start asking to join the voice, to let more reps and senators know that this is something that cities can use the help on from a state level, type of thing.
I think we can have a conversation with Ann Lucheski. And then probably then begin the conversations with our legislative delegation before we put together a legislative agenda.
Grassroots change, right?
Things have changed.
Always happens at the bottom up.
Yeah.
Mayor, Council, we will absolutely have those conversations, continue to have those conversations and to, to monitor that activity closely, certainly, following this conversation more specifically related to this. And we'll wrap that into our budget conversations this year.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll continue to monitor this, this fund balance in this fund as we go forward. Parks Capital Fund. This is a property tax levy funded, for the most part. We do also have, obviously, park dedication fees that are deposited here, as well as a portion of landfill host fees. In terms of the property tax levy, there's a 3% increase that has been programmed into the, the plan. And potential bonding, we don't have any recommended bonding at this point in time. Certainly, this fund, as you'll see, is challenged in terms of renovation, the renovation fund balance. As you can see, as we get out into the later years, the renovation fund balance does dip into the negative and really is, you know, it is almost, it's borrowing from parks dedication, as it looks like on this, on this slide. One of the things that we're looking at for the 2024 budget is really to, to split these two funds into parks renovation and parks dedication. And part of our work with the parks, park system inventory and CIP is really take a look at what our needs are, to look at what those challenges are. We know we're challenged in the renovation area, we've known that for a while. And just really kind of fully separate those out so we can more easily assess what our needs are into the future.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
And to clarify, when we bring in park dedication fees, that cannot be used for renovation. And so that's why you're looking at separating those out, to give a clearer picture of, these are the projects that need renovation, this is what we have, this is how much it costs, versus dedication. And looking at this, it looks like the, the fund balance for dedication stays high because we're not, we're not doing a bunch of new parks. But we're going negative on the renovation.
Yep.
On the replacement.
Councilmember Schultz? Correct. That, right now, with our preliminary projection, as we look into the future, that's what we're showing. And that's one reason why we want to split out those funds, to really more easily define where our needs are. And that'll go hand in hand with what we're doing in terms of our full parks inventory. And, and certainly, I want to make clear that in the most, the earlier years, we have not spent parks dedication on renovation. We are very careful about how we're spending those funds. It's for that reason we want to take a closer look at this. I think this just really illustrates the challenges in that fund right now.
Okay. Councilmember Keely?
What was the source for the renovation fund to get as high as it did in '01 and '22? Where did the renovation funding come from to put that green way up into the $7 million range or $8 million range?
Councilmember Keely, that renovation funding is really from tax levy, the property tax levy portion. And, and, yeah, the, the parks dedication is the blue part. So really accumulated funds. I think as, as, you know, we've pushed out some things, we make sure that, you know, as we look at what we're going to spend for the next year, we have to make some decisions. So we do, you know, I think staff has been making decisions about what can, what can we afford in the year? That's why we were able to, to keep that fund balance. I think as we look at our total needs going into the future, we know our needs are right now greater than, we think we're, you know, they're greater than what we have in terms of fund balance in that renovation. But I think it will be more clear once we're able to separate those, because those will just be two independent funding sources and we can look at those projects that fit within those areas. I also want to note that the higher parks dedication balance does include some of those larger park dedication fees that we've collected over the past year. We don't, right now, have spending included in there because there's future conversations to be had around that. So I did want to mention that as well.
So what would be the number that we're setting aside out of the general fund, basically, to fund the renovation of parks assets? And does it dip in the future because we haven't decided on any sort of increase to keep up with the, the demand? So what, what we see is the demand for the renovation there, but we haven't identified additional funding to keep up with that. Therefore, heads down, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Keely, while we have increased funding, we've increased property tax levy, that really is the major component of what funds this. It hasn't increased at the rate that our, our renovation needs have increased, I think. That's probably the, the simplest explanation.
Councilmember Keely, it's a, it's a great question, and it pairs nicely with Councilmember Schultz's question in that we're hitting on the, the challenge here, which is, how do we take care of what we currently have? And how do we take care of what we plan to invest in or build in the future? So I think separating these funds will help us to see that far more clearly. It will help us to be even more intentional about how we're, what we're investing in and how we're planning future operations and maintenance, like taking care of what we have. I also would say that it, it is, it is the reason why our parks inventory and
Is necessary.
A complete inventory of what we have and a complete assessment of what we have, paired with going back to the community, which you all asked us to do in, in December, to talk about what future investments we want to make, is we bring that all together in a park system plan that will really help us to inform, to inform both the, the future investments fund as well as that, that maintenance fund that we're talking about creating. And it would be our hope that, that certainly in this CIP process, we set the groundwork for that. We likely are going to need more time, from a staff perspective, to complete that inventory and assessment. So this will likely be a, a two-budget cycle conversation in, in total, before we get everything that we need. But it will give us a, a good foundation this next year to start better planning for the future and bring those conversations that Jenny mentioned back, that we've talked about, for council direction.
And I'm really glad that Donna is here. She manages, is it Arbor Vista or Ram Bush?
Ram Bush.
Ram Bush.
Ram Bush, sorry. But, but, but you work well. But, you know, it's all about, as I have talked before about Kelleher Park, where we need a lot of work for the residents of both Ram Bush and Arbor Vista. So that's why this inventory, Donna, is very important. And I know that you're here because that's also important to you and the residents that, that are down in that area. So, yeah. So it's good that you're here.
Madam Mayor, I just want to follow. One of the reasons I pointed that out is, in 2023, which obviously we're in that, but we've passed the budget, we're living in that budget, the green is well above, right? It's in positive territory. But beginning in the very first budget year, which we have not set yet, is when it suddenly goes straight south, right? So there's a very, it's almost like, well, are we spending all that? But no, we just haven't really set the budget to decide what we're going to put in there or be able to put in there, right? To fund whatever the programs are that are in Garrett's, you know, five-year plan. Like, this is the stuff we need to renovate and, and overhaul.
Garrett?
Ferris?
Councilmember Keely, we have existing documents in-house that track life expectancy, conditions, things like that, with cost estimates and whatnot. And what that document allows us to do is basically say, here are the needs. Some of our biggest needs from year to year are, are asphalt, basically, parking lots, trails, things like that, replacing that. So we've got into a system of kind of dealing with those every other year because they can be a $1.5 to $2 million spike, right? The, you know, to try to best answer your question, those, the, our, our park system is 30-plus years old. Some of those things haven't been touched, right? So this graph and our, our projections reflect the fact that we're going to have a lot of things that come due. Some of these things we can kick down the road. We've been kicking things down the road for years, right? But you can see that. You can see that at Kelleher, you can see that at Crystal Beach Playground right now. We have
To Fisher Park.
We have a, a slide that we simply can't replace at one of our playgrounds, so it's blocked off, right? So these things continue to age and, and will decrease. And, you know, their depreciation is continuing. And our existing documents allow us to track that. Our hope when we bring back this master plan of facilities and parks is that, you know, we've had a lot of changes in the, in the economy in the last, you know, two or three years. And so getting some more accurate numbers, inflating those prices accordingly, making sure that we have as many of the details as possible to make sure council has good information. And, you know, it works right now for us to know that, hey, this playground's in bad shape, it needs to be replaced. Or, hey, this trail is rated as a two, and we need to go out there and, and do asphalt work and get it up to date like we're doing at some of our parks or have done recently, right? So, but it's time to refresh it and, and whatnot too, so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Jenny?
Okay. Next fund that we'll talk about is Information Technology Capital Fund. For the next 10 years, we've got about $12.7 million in capital projects, $2 million for IT infrastructure and PC upgrades and replacements through 2027. This is a tax-supported fund, $413,000 in 2023, that's the tax levy, with 12% increase and a three, 12% increase, a year increase for 2024 through 2028, as, as was presented in the finance plan with a 3% per year after inflationary increase. As you can see, the minimum, recommended minimum fund balance, we are staying, staying within that with that very last year being very close to that number. But we'll just, we'll just make sure we're monitoring this, this fund for compliance and just making sure we're, we're keeping a, a, a good minimum fund balance in there. The Cable Franchise Fee Fund. Oh, we took a look at this fund last year, as we knew we were dealing with declining cable franchise fees over time. So that does assume that the cable franchise fees are declining. I think we've got a 4.5% decrease per year, 4.25 maybe, right around there, programmed in. We took a look and we assumed peg fees were probably going to stay more stable. So that, that's, that's how we've looked at it. So that, that's, that's how we've looked at it. But, um, we realized we needed to, to really reduce those general fund transfers. Um, so previous to this, um, this fund did transfer money into the general fund. Um, over this 10-year period, we've just slowly declined that to really mirror the decrease in franchise fees that we're seeing. Um, one of the other things that changed last year is that we moved, um, communications staff into the general fund. So this, this fund really is, um, accounting for, um, the cable television staff as well as capital items, um, related to that. And really the goal is just really to maintain a, maintain a stable fund balance. So we'll just take a look, you know, we'll just monitor this fund annually and making sure that our plans are tracking with what we're seeing in terms of franchise fee changes and declines. Um, next we'll go to the ICE Arena Fund. Um, as we look at this over the next 10 years, um, operating revenues are currently covering up, covering operating costs. Uh, there's increases in here for fees and charges of about 3%. Um, they do pay for some capital projects in this fund, although keep in mind 2.2 million dollars in capital projects are paid for, uh, from the facilities capital fund. As you look out, um, kind of over the 10 years here, um, there's a rec, as we look, we, we look at maybe keeping six months of working capital, um, in that fund, we're not quite there. But, um, as you can see, the, the cash balance is really staying pretty stable. Um, there is a slight downturn towards the end, but that, that is 10 years out. So, um, we're a little under where we'd like to be, but, um, in terms of, you know, ICE Arena operations, um, generally speaking, the operating revenues are at least covering the operating loss, uh, expenses, excuse me. Um, and we'll, we'll monitor this, um, as, you know, we'll continue to monitor the operations and capital needs as, as we go forward.
Okay.
Clarification on, this is a good one if you go back. Because this is covered by the facilities fund, which is funded by the franchise fees, sort of a simple question, why are we tracking two different funding methods or funding mechanisms? Are some things within the ICE Center just not part of what we consider the facility fund to cover?
Yeah.
Smaller things or things inside the building that maybe wouldn't be the roof or the walls or the floor, but maybe other stuff, right?
Um, Councilmember Keely, as we look at the capital, um, much of the capital that stays within the ICE Center Fund might be more of the equipment that they're using, um, Zamboni's, things like that. Um, when we look at some of the other larger capital projects in terms of building, um, some of those larger items, um, in recent years, we had a roof there. Those are the types of things that we will look at, um, for the facilities fund, so.
Is that a clear delineation between what falls under facilities and what is going to stay in the ICE Arena or whatever it might be?
Councilmember Keely, Mayor, Council, I, it's a, it's a great question. Uh, this is common across our major enterprise funds. So Ames is another very good example of this.
Yeah.
Um, you know, generally that delineation has been the operational, the operational necessities, uh, that are considered capital expenditures are in the fund itself. And then those, those broader, more large-scale municipal facilities needs are funded out of the facilities fund. Um, that it, you know, that is a, a matter of determination. Though those things certainly could be changed. Uh, I think right now, uh, it, it is the most responsible to our ongoing capital needs, particularly on the maintenance side of things, uh, when it comes to municipal facilities. I do think, not to be a broken record, but we're also, we're also doing a facilities inventory and assessment across all of our municipal facilities. So this building to a shed in the corner of, of a park somewhere, uh, that will give us better information to inform those outcome discussions in, in these funds in the future, um, be at ICE, be at the golf course, be at Ames.
Yeah.
I think that can, that can better inform how the council might want to continue to plan for those needs. Right now, I think this is the most, certainly it's reflective of current policy and, and really most responsible to, to these enterprise funds, uh, and, and what is paying for which needs. Uh, but, but certainly something that we should be talking about more and we will once we have that information.
Yeah. The reason, and thank you, appreciate the explanation. The reason I asked is when we, uh, expanded our franchise fee and expanded the facilities and said, let's just, if I take care of the facilities. I think my interpretation back then was everything about that facility. Uh, not necessarily delineating, well, it's the roof, the walls, the doors, the windows, the parking lot, but
You mean about the franchise fees?
But the equipment inside is going to still be funded by this enterprise fund, right? Type of thing. So I'm glad we had the discussion. Thank you.
Ames Center Fund, um, operating revenues, um, have, right now do not, um, have not covered, fully covered operating expenses. I mean, we're getting back to a place where, where that, that will be. I think 2022, we're, we're, um, we were there. We don't have host fees in this, um, fund. Uh, in 2021, that ended. And we do not have transfers from other city funds at this time. So really it is operating revenues, um, naming rights. Um, naming rights are scheduled to decrease, um, I think, beginning in 2029 to 50,000. Additionally, this does not include 2.3 million dollars in capital projects, uh, from the facilities capital fund. So, um, as you can see, um, the, in terms of ending cash or fund balance, um, it is steadily declining over the 10-year period, um, with, um, the working capital being, uh, the minimum fund balance being that, um, our recommendation being that orange, orange, uh, portion. Um, just, we'll need to consider that, um, as we go forward. I know, you know, COVID kind of changed, changed the trajectory, trajectory of where this was going. So I know we're, we're coming, I know the Ames Center is coming back, back from that. And, um, so we'll just need to monitor that as we go forward and the future capital needs as well as, um, funding.
And it's worth pointing out as the liaison to the Ames Center, Madam Mayor and Council, there was a one point, right around 1.1 million dollar shuttered venues, uh, facility grant from the federal government that the Ames Center Fund received. And it, I would assume it took that money in, in 2020? When that spike, that column spiked? I don't know when it was exactly, but, uh, do you remember when that was added to the books?
I, was it 2021?
I thought it was 2021, yeah.
I think it's 2021.
It, it doesn't look like it's registering. You know what I mean? Cause 2020 balance was, was up there. But at the same time, the losses were, the lost revenue was substantial. So it may just kind of turn out to be, it'll look like it's a wash
Yeah.
On a chart, uh, because the, the grant was meant to replace the revenues that were lost.
Correct.
Uh, and that may be why we don't see a huge dip in the fund in 2021 is because of that grant.
And I, I think that probably is correct, is that 2021 is up there, um, because we did get that cash infusion from that shuttered venues grant. Um, and that allowed us to fund a lot of those, um, operating
Right.
Or those revenue losses from 2020 and 2021.
Yes. I'm, 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 I guess if anything, I'm surprised 2020 is
As high as it is.
Tall as it was, right? Cause what made it so big that equated to the same thing as getting a, a 1.1 million dollar grant?
Because they were all shuttered.
Councilmember Keely, uh, Mayor, Council, we certainly can, can dig into the FMP and answer that question. I'm wondering if it's a matter of how we determined accounting?
How it was accounted.
Or how we, how we made changes around
Yeah.
Some of how Ames' capital and Ames' operations were offset by?
Correct. And
It, it probably is a matter of accounting. We can get that answered for you.
Like where we booked it and so it
Yeah. So I think, I think you're, to your point though, you know, these blue bars are your ending cash balances. So I, I think you've explained, uh, aptly. Is that a word? I don't know. You've explained well, Councilmember Keely, uh, likely what you're seeing in terms of offsets of, of that grant coming, coming on the books and lost revenues
Right.
Uh, that would have been experienced.
We also, at that time, were collecting host fees in this fund.
There were also funds for FTE during the pandemic.
Yeah. And I, there's something that
BPE. Yeah. The BPE.
There's something that's back here that's just not making its way forward yet, but we can certainly get those numbers, uh, get that information for you. Um, I do think it's in the way it was funded and kind of the changes, you know, kind of, there were also changes made, right, to operations that did decrease expenses in that year for us too, so.
Yeah. Yes. There was a significant cut, uh, reduction in expenses.
Yeah. So funding was unique in that year to, to, to this, um, to this facility. And certainly we can take a look at that, but, um, I do believe there were some remaining, uh, funding mechanisms that we don't have in there anymore and that might be partially related to host fees, but there may be something else too that we can, we can get back to you on. Golf Course Fund, I believe this is our last fund. Um, current operating revenues, uh, as we go forward, we certainly have had, um, three years now of higher, higher than what was, uh, considered normal in the past for our number of rounds and revenue. I do think, um, as we look at this, we'll, we'll take a look at, um, projected fee increases into the future and also what we're, what we're projecting. We may be projecting a little bit conservative on those out years. So certainly that's something we'll look at as we move forward in the budget. Current projected fee increases, uh, really about 4% a year, 2024 through 2025, and then 3% a year after. There is about 808,000 in capital projects. Now, a lot of that in the golf course fund, um, would be more equipment types of purchases over this 10-year period. There is 420, I think 429,000 is what that says, uh, from facilities capital fund for larger type capital items, um, at the golf course. But the golf course is funding over this 10-year period. Well, its equipment, most of its equipment purchases and those kinds of things. Certainly, as we said, this is a starting off point. We'll certainly look at those revenues as we go forward and make sure, you know, now that we have three years of history of, of maybe an increase in rounds, we'll have to take a look and make sure that we're right sizing that, uh, revenue.
Just a question on what we consider a facility at the golf course? The clubhouse for sure. Do we consider
The greens?
The fairways and the greens?
It's all part of the structure.
I would guess that, um, and I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I would think irrigation and those types of things would be considered larger type facilities projects that
Much like a ball field.
Yeah.
Where the facility isn't just the structure built up above ground, but the fencing, the field.
The infrastructure.
Irrigation.
It could be below ground, yeah.
Yeah, below ground. Okay.
And certainly, you know, mowers and, uh, golf carts and things are probably those kinds of things that are
Except that would be out of the enterprise fund, not facility? Cause it's like, like the ICE Center discussion we had, it's, the equipment inside is still being funded by the
Equipment.
Uh, legacy, uh,
The equipment fund.
Fund or whatever, the enterprise fund that we've had forever, right? But the facilities is coming in and taking over the bigger stuff.
Correct. It would be a similar type analysis, um, for this one.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll, um, take a look at the fee structure, um, and ongoing capital needs and make sure we're monitoring those and those are appropriately, appropriate as we go, go forward. Oh, I do have one more fund. Sorry. The EDA Fund. Next 10 years, um, as we talked about during last budget cycle, we did increase the tax levy to a million dollars, really to start funding, um, an EDA investment fund, um, so that we can, uh, participate in, in any redevelopment or development opportunities as they, as they present themselves going forward. As we look, um, the property tax levy increases by about 250,000 a year through 2025, um, to really bring us to that maximum allowed levy that, um, that red line or the orange line there is that EDA tax rate. So that's bringing it, um, that's just showing, showing us going to the maximum. Uh, the ending fund balance here is really showing the growth over the 10-year period and really, um, allowing us to build up a fund balance, um, for future development or redevelopment. The fund balance doesn't include any assumptions for additional new programs that weren't included in the budget last year. Oh, yep. And, and as you look, I believe 2023 here shows, um, at the end of 2023, we're getting close to 2 million dollars accumulated. So that wraps up, um, the funds that we're presenting tonight. Um, next steps, really this was just our first step in the process. Um, we're planning future discussions, um, to further inform, uh, the 2024 budget development. Um, here's what we had, kind of what we have slated, uh, through, through September. And, um, at the end of, or middle to end of September is when the max tax, uh, max tax will be adopted. So April, we plan to come back to you with compensation study market assessments. In June, uh, as Greg mentioned, uh, facility project pre-designed and funding options. July, we'll be, um, presenting the 2024 through 2028 CIP. Um, August, we'll come back to you with a budget and tax levy, um, presentation and options. And early September, we have a work session on the utility rate study and results for the 2024 rate study. So that wraps that, wraps the presentation up tonight. Um, I'll stand for any questions, but otherwise, um, we will come back to you in a month with further discussion. Or a couple of weeks, actually.
If there are no other questions, I think, uh, um, our direction to staff is stay on course and come back with all of the other information that, uh, you need for us to give guidance on. But so far, uh, there have been questions as we moved along and I think, uh, you've captured all of that. Michelle and Bethany? Yeah. Any other thoughts? Okay. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Leadership team, I really appreciate you, you being here.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. And for all of the work that you all do to make sure that we have a budget that we present to the community and that it's good for the community to see that we adopted a budget with, um, with a non-binding resolution and we understand some of the pressures that we're going, we're, we're challenged with, but we're going to continue to move forward. So thank you to all of you for all of your hard work. So now we will move on to the opioid settlement update. Jenny, this is also yours and I think Jared's going to move in on this one as well, or
He certainly can chime in.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any remarks to make?
I don't. As a matter of fact, Mayor, thanks for, thanks for offering because I made that mistake last time.
Well, you know, I try to follow my script.
I will. And I made a mistake. I definitely made a mistake in your script.
And I will always make sure that I will, I will defer to you if there's anything else.
Thank you.
Okay. Who is, uh, Jenny?
Yep. I am, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm up next, uh, with the opioid settlement update.
Okay.
Uh, this is a continuation of our discussion a couple of weeks ago. Um, we have since received, uh, information from, uh, the Attorney General. Uh, the Attorney General, in coordination with the league, has proposed an amended MOA and we've received that information. Uh, the amended MOA allows for and applies to future settlements and all other terms of that original MOA and agreement have remained unchanged. Uh, funding allocation amounts specific to Burnsville have not yet been released, but, um, as we, as stated in the exhibit to the MOA, our funding allocation percentage is unchanged. Additionally, um, the April 18th deadline has been confirmed. So if the city is, um, if the city council decides to participate, we will need to have all our documents signed and sent or uploaded, uh, by April 18th. Um, the city would need to sign on to any future settlements, uh, with a process to be determined by the council. Um, this next slide here is the process that staff has, um, recommended to follow for future settlements. Um, we, we do know or we do expect that there will be future settlements. So as we move forward, we would, um, propose that we would come to council again at check-ins, have work session, work session discussion, and then if council determines to move forward, um, have a resolution approved, um, at a council meeting. That's the process that, um, staff, staff is recommending tonight. That's the process that staff, staff is recommending tonight. We do want to note that the recommended resolution from the Attorney General and the League does include language that allows for participation in all future settlements. That is different than what we are proposing. As we outlined, it would be settlement by settlement in our resolution. One thing that does, it, it may make the timeline short. We just want to make council aware of the fact that, you know, we're not certain that we're going to have how much time we're going to have once we're notified to participate. So we do just want to note that.
So nothing has changed in the memorandum of understanding except that there's, there's more money and they want us to accept the money.
The, the memorandum, the memorandum or the agreement actually just allows for future settlements. The original agreement did, did note that there might be, but this really allows for future settlements to be, to really be governed by that, by this agreement. And allow, so it doesn't have to be changed each time, I think.
To Jenny's, go ahead.
Mayor and Council, there are two minor amendments that are in the amended MOA. One is to eliminate the requirement at which time during the year the city may make its election to send its money to the county.
We don't want to do that.
And then, yeah, and then clarifying reporting requirements, just putting a little bit more framework on how you report on a yearly basis what the money was used for in line with the funds. But by and large, the, the changes are to reflect the fact that there's going to be multiple settlements anticipated. And so it's one amended MOA, they don't anticipate coming back and requesting amendments in the future.
Okay. Councilmembers, yes, Kara?
But this does not, this does or this does not mean that we're obligated automatically to accept those settlements. We would need to vote each time, true or false?
True. You would need to, as we've outlined it, if we, if we come back to you with a resolution.
Resolution.
It would include this settlement. The MOA does not bind us to participate in future settlements.
Yeah, and they're saying they'll come back to us to check-ins, work session and council meetings and then to adopt a resolution.
You had clarification?
Yeah, just to clarify, so there's, there's two things sort of happening at once. You have the MOA, which is the document by which in Minnesota, how funds are allocated across cities and counties. So the council, should they choose to adopt that amended MOA, that would apply to any future settlement funds. You do that by resolution by and large, but that's that mechanism. The, the resolution as proposed also opts into the current settlement that's on the table, which is the TIVA settlements, Walgreens, Walmart, CBS and TIVA. As proposed by the AG's office, they're proposing a more expanded resolution that would sort of say, hey, look, all future settlement agreements under these opioid supply chain participants, we're agreeing to participate now. What staff is recommending is a resolution that is, I guess, a half measure on that front, right? So adopting the amended MOA, but not opting into future settlements at this time. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If we were to go with what the Attorney General is saying, can they just arbitrarily change the MOA at any time without it going through us? Or we have to vote for that?
No, we, we would have to vote. And again, they don't.
As long as the MOA doesn't change and we're satisfied with what's going on, we could just keep taking the extra funds as they come along until they try to fundamentally change that MOA to something different, correct?
That's correct, again, as long as you approved a resolution that authorized staff to enter into this, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Greg?
I would just say, Mayor and Councilmembers, just for clarity, both for the community and for our conversation tonight, the staff recommendation is frankly my best attempt to try to capture the direction, the previous direction from the council, desire to continue to, to discuss any future settlements. I think that the reality is the MOA, as, as Jared has mentioned, the city attorney has, has mentioned, no substantive changes. And we also, we also recognize that our staff recommendation, it is at odds, at least in, in one way with the recommended resolution that the League supported and the AG's office has recommended, which essentially provides a, a mechanism in that resolution, to Councilmember Gustafson's point, to, to take additional settlements as they come. I think the, the practical concern in following our staff recommendation would be, we do expect that there are going to be future settlements under this MOA. And if past performance is a predictor of future reality, the timeframes that were provided might not be possible for us to come back to you in a work session to discuss participation and get it to a council vote to take affirmative action in that regard. So the, the risk said more simply would be, there could be future settlements that if you follow my staff recommendation, we just might not be able to participate in because we don't have the time to do that. So, you know, the, the League recommendation, the recommendation coming from the Attorney General, I think is addressing the reality that we can expect tight timeframes, said in a simple way, moving forward.
Well, let's, let's hope the AG's office has their crap together and can get us information in a timely manner.
So what you're saying is that we might not have to do a work session, but go directly to council to get the direction?
No, I'm always, Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm always going to be agile and, and try to be adaptive. But I, I do want to be clear that our recommendation would suggest that we're always going to come to you in a public discussion before we would put action in front of you. Could that result in, in us doing that in a single council meeting? I, I suppose, and it doesn't necessarily fit the spirit of what I feel that the council direction on this has been to this point in time, which is why we're making the staff recommendation that we're making that does deviate from the recommended resolution from the AG and the League.
Yeah, so the thing is that, to Councilmember Gustafson's point, and, but we're, you're still going to be bringing it to us, we'll still act on it. It might not be a work session, it might come in, you might have check-ins and come into council meeting. You know, and we'd be nimble and flexible to meet the deadlines. And so, you know, and to Kara's point of the, Jared, if the AG can get a memorandum of understanding and whatever that might be, and perhaps it might not be because they already have put in place a mechanism for movement. And it would be just, you know, there's more money here for you.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I would summarize it that I am doing everything that I possibly can from a staff perspective, not to surprise you or not, for this not to show up on an agenda unannounced.
Well, in the check-ins, you can do that.
And I, you know, I think we're proving a track record here that, that communication is important and that's what this recommendation reflects. I, I do have some practical concern, Councilmember Schultz, to your point, like we're dependent on, on others to, to provide us information with enough time to frankly get it on an agenda, period, much less a work session and a council meeting, right? So there, there could be some practical challenges there.
Okay, Jared?
Mayor and Council, I was just going to make the point. I don't know that the, an amendment to the MOA will be the driver of a short timeframe next go around because there's no amendments anticipated. But there still could be some other drivers to the short timeframe, just in terms of how, how though they're negotiated.
There's more money coming in from the settlement.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to underscore, Mayor, Council, in that regard, that if there was some sort of change to the MOA, that would require an affirmative vote in the council anyway.
Sure. Dan G?
It would be my personal preference that we go with the Attorney General's recommendation. And if there is a major change, it's going to come to us and we're going to, we'll, we'll catch it. But instead of having staff time and council time every time another one comes along to relitigate again, it's, right now, if we're comfortable with what the MOA says, we should just go with it and take the money as it comes. And if they do a major change, then we have a chance to talk about it. And then we can, we can end it there, but let's kind of get the process moving here.
Ben?
I mean, I don't know how time, and we're already going to be in one-on-ones. And if Greg's catching these a week in ahead of time, I don't think it's any more labor intensive. But at the same point, what Dan just said, as long as there's no, you know, substantial change to what's coming through, I don't think we would need more than just a quick little, hey, this is coming down the pipeline. As opposed to throwing it to like a work session where we're, we're litigating it.
Okay.
I am good with the staff recommendation.
Dan K, staff recommendation? Okay, all right, because I, I agree with you, once it's all done, it's done. But if makes it more transparent and what staff is presenting, then that's what we're going to do, okay?
Just to clarify, I'm not, I want to make sure that I'm hearing the council's direction.
But I'm also going to say that we're going to be nimble and, and pivot when we need to move quickly.
So, so am I hearing, follow the staff recommendation?
Yeah, 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 but also let's be reasonable. You said that sometimes we might not, you know, something might come up and just be nimble.
Well, I just, full, yes, Mayor, absolutely. And full disclosure, there, there might be a situation, following the staff recommendation, where we just don't have the time.
Yeah.
And, and that would mean that we would not be participating in that particular settlement. We wouldn't take the, the funds and that just.
No, 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 we're not going to put, leave money on the table. You're kidding? We need the money, we're, we're just spending $36,000 on, on a new program. I'm not going to leave money on the table.
Well, if you go with the Attorney General's, you won't leave money on the table. We don't run the risk of leaving money on the table.
Burnsville, we just talked about, Burnsville deserves what we can get.
I think going with the staff recommendation is the compromise that our council can, can feel good about as a whole. And.
Yeah.
If, if, because here's the thing, if we're saying that things can just be thrown at us with no notice whatsoever and we don't look at it, like I don't think that that's good governance. I also don't, I would hope that our Attorney General would not do that. I, I would hope that they would have good governance practices and if they give us a week, we're good to go. Like there really isn't, there really isn't too much of a problem.
Well, and, and, you know, the, the League is also another oversight around all of that. So anyway, what I'm hearing, but I also want to give staff some wiggle room. To your point, if you don't have enough time, then you, what is it that you're asking for? Go directly to council meeting?
The, the staff recommendation would create the reality that there could be a timing situation where I simply can't get it on an agenda. That, that is a, that's just a reality without how our two-week cycle works, right? So I just, I just, full disclosure, that, that is, you know, that's one of the elements of this recommendation that, that we're talking about, that I, I want to make sure that the, the council understands. And that's why I asked for clarity, Mayor, because I was hearing potentially some conflict.
No, what you're hearing is that there's three of us who are saying, you know, if, if the AG's office doesn't have any, any changes, you know, we can go along with the recommendation from the League and the AG's office.
I can ask, how many days' notice for an emergency meeting?
Oh, we, Michelle, three days.
Do we really think they're not going to give us three days?
I would, Councilmember Schultz, Councilmembers, I would, I would hope. And I, I don't know, right, I mean, I can't answer that question, but I, I certainly would hope so.
So what we're saying is that if we follow this and we give you some wiggle room, you can call an emergency meeting.
Certainly that would be the worst, Mayor, Council, under the staff recommendation, that would be the worst case scenario, yes. Or the worst case scenario where we actually would participate in the settlement.
I need clarification on one thing. The council doesn't have to take a formal vote to opt in or out of this. A simple check-in, you know, if Greg sends an email or makes a phone call, says, hey, we just got word of this, this is what it looks like, do you want in or out? We can thumb up or down that way too, we don't have to have a formal vote to opt in.
Yeah, because we've already agreed.
By our own design, right?
We already agreed to accept money.
Councilmember Workman, Mayor, I would.
Additional money.
I would turn that to the city attorney.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we, unless you went with AG's version of the resolution, which gives the authority for staff to, to execute all settlement paperwork for the ones that are coming in the future, yes, you would have to take a formal action in a public meeting to opt into the next round of settlements.
Is that our doing or is that what the AG's office has said? That if you're not going to auto-enroll, then you have to go through formal council action?
It's, it's, yeah, it's both. I mean, in order for us to approve a settlement agreement, we have to do so.
That's just our government process, God, okay. I was a little thrown off by check-ins because I, I was understanding that to mean that we could decide based on one of those three options.
Councilmember Workman, Council, great point. What, what I'm trying to be clear about in the, in the staff recommended process is we would do our best to follow the model that, that I'm following on everything I possibly can from a governance perspective, right? That, that communication is important, so we will absolutely talk about things ahead of time or communicate ahead of time. That could be check-ins, that could be written communication, whatever it might be. But we would come to the council to have a, a public conversation about whether or not you would choose to participate in that particular settlement that's covered under the MOA. And then we would get it on a council meeting agenda for action. And again, we would follow our, our agenda standards for that, right? If it was unanimously put to, to a council meeting for action, we would put it on consent. If it wasn't, we would put it as a regular item for discussion and follow those standards. The reality is that the recommended resolution from the AG and the League has a, a whereas clause that, that essentially says that this, that the action that you would be taking applies to, to future settlements added to that MOA. And that would allow me then administratively to sign on to those settlements as a, as a matter of, of my responsibility, so you'd be delegating that authority to me. Whether or not you follow my recommendation or you go with the recommended resolution, I'm still going to communicate with you about it, right? It's just a matter of the, the staff recommendation includes an element of public dialogue and, and affirmative council action, a vote about future settlements. The recommended resolution from the Attorney General or the League would create an environment where I would administratively sign on to those things. And of course, if I'm going to sign on, I, I would, I would obviously be communicating that with you. My recommendation from a staff perspective, although it creates the timing question, was my best attempt at reflecting what I believed that the, the general majority direction of the council best reflected in terms of our path forward.
So this is what I would say is let's go through this first round and see how it feels. We're in a much different place this time than we were with the first round. The first one was slipped on to consent without it even being mentioned in prior meetings. So I don't think that will happen again. And if this becomes cumbersome and clunky, then I would be willing to renegotiate and go back to just giving Greg the authority to sign on to these.
So do you want to give him the authority now to sign on to it?
I'd say let's let this process go through one round and see what happens. And if it's clunky and, and we're tripping over ourselves, then I would be willing to pivot and just say, Greg, you do it.
Councilmember Workman, to that point, Mayor, if I, if I can defer or ask the city attorney, if that would be possible.
Speak now or forever.
Of course it can, you can make those decisions.
Certainly we could, we could do this one and just approve this settlement. So approve the amended MOA and, and this settlement. And the next time, we don't have to approve the amended MOA that stands and then approve the next settlement.
And then direct, and then give the city manager the authority to accept.
Well, that would be the next round. And, and that's where the AG's suggesting is into, into the future. All of these opioid supply chain participants, it's finite to this litigation, right? It's not to any other settlement. Then you could give that authority and I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Then you could give that authority, and I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Well, that's all I wanna do.
So, so I could bring a resolution back to the council, to Councilmember Workman's suggestion, in the future, the, the next new settlement that comes around, that would include that, that additional recommended language that the AG and the league had, had recommended.
Yes, that's correct.
I can, we can do that in the future. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't making, I wasn't writing checks that I couldn't cash, Councilmember Workman.
No, accepting cash, that you, you're not writing checks, you're not writing a check, you're accepting a check.
You understand what I was saying, yes, I stand corrected.
Millennials knew what he was talking about.
Yeah, that's right. So, the thing is, all we're saying is that this time around, this time around, we're going to accept the, the new money that's coming. And then the next time, if there is new money, then we can see how that process moves forward. And if it is smooth, then we can delegate the authority to Greg to, to accept the, the money.
That would be a future discussion that I would bring back to you the next go-around for your consideration and your direction at that point.
Okay, is that okay, everybody? Are you clear, are you clear with what?
I am abundantly clear, and I apologize for my lack of clarity earlier.
Now, you're clear.
Yeah, I've got your direction.
Everybody, Jenny, you're clear?
I am clear, yes.
Jared, you're clear, okay, let's move on.
We have one, one final direction we need from council is council's support of participating in this settlement.
I think that's what we just discussed.
Just making sure.
Are we going to muddy the waters again?
No, no, I do not wanna muddy.
I am, I am gonna ask one follow-up question. Council, would you like to see this on your consent agenda, or shall I just put it on your regular agenda?
On the consent agenda, because we've had so much discussion around it.
I think but for anything drastically new or different.
Because we can always pull it off consent. If there's something.
Guess who will? Just saying.
Well, you know, when something comes, if it's okay, it's okay.
Exactly.
Not, you know.
Exactly, just.
I, I will simply put it on the regular agenda if the council is.
Okay, then just put it on a regular agenda, okay.
Thank you for that, Claire.
Are we all okay now?
Yes.
I think we're clear. So, we will have that for you on your regular agenda on the April 4th city council meeting.
Okay, everybody okay? Everybody understands what the direction is? No muddy waters?
No muddy waters.
Oh, God, let's go, let's move on. Okay, thank you. I think, Jeff, you've been waiting for your educa. Okay, the, the, the next is the Burnsville Center Economic Development Tools. And Jeff Thompson, our community development director, is going to give us some education, some information.
Thank you, mayor and council, appreciate it. Now, we'll talk about the detailed intricacies of tax increment financing. Mayor and council, at your last workshop meeting there, I think Councilmember Keely at, at the roundtable brought forward a discussion around economic development and some of our tools available to us for, to support redevelopment of the Burnsville Mall. And that the council had asked us to come back to you with just a overview of kind of an update of what's going on at the mall, very high level, and then a very high-level discussion about kind of the role of the city, what we've, what we, our tools and our role is in economic development at the mall, and also to talk a little bit about the tools that are available to us to help, again, support that vision that the council has. So, I just wanted to start quickly by highlighting, this has changed over time. But what I kind of call the super block of the mall, so all the properties that are served by the Ring Road Service Road. So, that includes the, the whole attached mall, as well as kind of the out parcels within the parking lot. As it stands today, there are nineteen separate parcels that comprise the super block of the mall. And there are fourteen separate owners of both the mall and of those out parcels. So, fairly complicated ownership structure of the mall. And then when you look at the interior closed mall and the anchor tenants, there, there are five separate owners. So, I think there's like eight parcels there, ten parcels, but ultimately, five different ownership groups. The J.C. Penney's and Macy's own their own real estate. Windfall of the Pacifica Square Project owns the real estate where the Dick's Sporting Goods is and that project is located. Seritage still owns the real estate for the former Sears site. And then the mall itself is owned by the investment company, Kohan Retail Investment Group. In this, I just wanted to highlight what is actually owned by Kohan. So, this is what would commonly be known as the, the mall proper, or the interior kind of enclosed mall. This is just highlighting those structures that are owned by them. I think it's six parcels, primarily the mall, a couple out parcels, which are primarily parking, which they are required to provide, and then just some green space to the south side of the mall.
And Jared owns their own.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
And it's a whole different ownership group.
Correct. And then all of this, mayor and council, is, there is an operating and maintenance agreement that's private. The city's not upgrading that. But there is an overall operations and maintenance agreement, which dictates all sorts of things with cross easements, cross access, cross parking, operations, maintenance requirements. But that's something that we should be cognizant of as, as, as we move forward with any sort of project out here, i.e., parking is a requirement in there, that all the tenants are required to meet a minimum parking threshold. And any changes that would require, any changes to the operations agreement would require an amendment by all owners within that property. So, to talk about the kind of roles and responsibilities, I, I put together kind of these three categories for the council to, to, to consider. I see us as both kind of regulator, supporter, and activator. And I think we've done, we've been active in, in a number of these fronts. Certainly, from a regulator standpoint, we have updated our comprehensive plan, and we've opted, and updated our zoning ordinances to allow redevelopment that's consistent with our vision and our plans for the mall to occur, to be consistent with our comp plan and zoning. So, that's kind of a basic, ensure that we're allowing development consistent with our, our, our plan. Additionally to that, we, as you know, we completed the AUAR, which is the environmental review. So, that component is in place, which is important, and then completed the traffic study. All of this says to any potential developer or investor out here that we are allowing development to occur that's consistent with what the vision is for, for Burnsville Center. On supporter, I, I think the city went a long way in building that vision. That's an important document to articulate that this is a priority area for investment and redevelopment for the council and for the EDA, and is supported by the community. And so, we've obviously done work in building that community support, creating the vision, and then connecting with owners and developers to, to, to advocate for development that, again, is consistent with that vision. Certainly, as part of, I think, the supporter role is to seek external funding. We do that a lot. There's a number of funding sources available for, for projects, from the state, from the Met Council. I know the county has some programs, so we would certainly be willing to, to come to the council and explore any options for external grant opportunities to support projects.
We also had some federal funds that allows for the off-ramps from thirty-five Ws, since it's a, it's a federal highway.
For sure.
Yeah.
And then mayor and council, where I think I wanna spend some time tonight is talking about kind of the activator role, which is, I see as a, a big significant role in economic development is investing in public infrastructure. That's obviously a primary role we have in planning for what infrastructure is needed to support development, and how can we plan for that and, and budget and finance for some of those improvements that will drive economic development. And we talked a little bit about it earlier, that those, some of those plans are in the works. And then talk a little bit about our ability to provide financial assistance to projects. And through the tools that we'll talk about tonight, tax increment financing and tax abatement. Those are kind of the two primary tools available to us. I think providing financial assistance and supporting a project with financial support is an, is a, obviously, an important conversation. And it's a serious conversation for consideration. We have, I think we sent out to the council earlier, a development policy and kind of financing tools, policy that we have in place. 'Cause the primary thing we would want to identify in any request for financial assistance is what is the public purpose? And, and that has to be identified by statute, and it has to be identified by our policy, is what is the specific public purpose that this project and, and the need for assistance would provide? And so, I said other words, like, what's the outcome that we expect out of this? So, that is oftentimes job creation, it's tax-based creation, it's stimulating growth and, and market opportunities. Constructing housing can be part of that, as well as identifying and planning for that public infrastructure. Certainly, public infrastructure is a public purpose. So, as part of any, whether that's an outside source or it's our source, this is a conversation we have, is what is the public purpose of, of the financing? I wanna talk about tax increment a little bit, give you a, a high-level update on it, mostly because it is probably the, the, the most important tool and the EDA have at our disposal. And, and actually, in this case, probably one of the more flexible tools we have. Again, those public purpose questions become very important. But the city has the ability to establish a tax increment district on this site. Well, that's, besides the site, the city has the ability to create tax increment financing districts inherent by statute. There are five different types and one subtype of district we are able to create as a local, as an EDA. We are able to create those districts. And what we are able to do, as you, as you probably have talked about, is it allows us to capture the increase in property taxes that are created by development to help support that development. And that's the, and so that's the nexus of how it works. It allows for a development that would occur reasonably, that wouldn't occur reasonably without the assistance. That's the but-for test that we often talk about. And then, as you know, the taxing, the taxing authorities continue to receive kind of the base property tax value. So, the school district, the city, and the county continue to receive those kind of base taxes. It's the increment that can help support development.
Their portion.
Correct. Obviously, for, therefore, for tax increment to be most effective and used most strategically, there needs to be a project or an investment in the property that then creates an increase in the taxable market value that then becomes able to capture the increment from the project. I also think sometimes it gets lost in all of it, that at the end of the district, the full tax value goes back onto the tax rules of all taxing agencies. So, that, the full market value kind of hits the tax rules once the term of the agreement with the developer and the city has decertified the district. So, let's talk about the redevelopment district. As you know, the, the city sought and received some special funding from the state legislature. So, we have the ability to create, it says multiple, so we can create district or districts within the Burnsville Center Shopping Center. So, we can create one, or we can create two or in phases, multiple districts. Under a redevelopment TIF district, that allows us to capture increment for twenty-five years under first receipt. So, that's effectively twenty-six years of tax increment that we can receive. What I wanted to highlight is that the eligible expenses piece of a tax increment district includes site acquisition. So, I know there's, the discussion was around what tools are available for site acquisition, and that's an eligible expense in redevelopment TIF. So, if there's a, for whatever costs are associated with, for site acquisition, we are able to finance that with tax increment. So, there's a funding tool there available.
But we have to know that there is a project.
Correct.
Because without any increased value, there's nothing.
Correct. And so, I think that gets to what I'll call the three-legged stool of tax increment. I think there's three important things to remember in it. One is that we do a calculation of how much increment's actually generated by the project. What's the project value? What's the, the associated increase in taxable market value? Therefore, how much tax increment would it generate over the life of the district? So, that's a very important calculation. The second becomes, what are the eligible costs of the development? So, including site acquisition, demolition, any sort of soil remediation, cleanup, the, the cost to reme, to prepare the site for redevelopment, articulating those. But the third important piece for us to consider is, what's the actual financing gap for the project? So, what is the amount of financing, you know, the minimum amount of financing that's required? Financial assistance from the city that's required to pass the but-for test to ensure that that's qualified with. So, it's all three of these calculations we would take into effect, or take into account before we'd make a recommendation to the EDA or the council of any sort of assistance that may be warranted for a project. To talk a little bit about, so obviously, tax increments get paid over the life of the district, over those twenty-six years. And so, but there are a number of ways to finance that tax increment over, over those time, over those years. Our development policy calls for, for, in most scenarios, for a pay-as-you-go TIF note. So, that essentially means the risk is on the developer, that we pay the increment as it is, as it is created and as it is paid by the developer, we will pay that back to them until the note is paid off, or until the, until the number of years of the term are expired, and then the district would be decertified. So, we only pay it if we get it, and that's a pay-as-you-go.
And that's what we've always done in Burnsville, pay-as-you-go.
Correct, very common, it passes the risk to the developer.
Yeah.
I would say there are ways to, for the developer to still monetize that, right? To, to take it to the private sector, to their own lending, to get the capital upfront and use it upon leverage for additional financing sources, but then they use it for their own.
But that's theirs, it's on their plate.
Yep. And then you can see along the continuum, there are funding options for the EDA. Again, would need to be reviewed in light of our development policy. But there are some other tools that pass that risk more on to the city by issuing either a tax increment revenue note, doing an interfund loan within our own cash balances, if available, or through even a TIF bond that's backed by the GO. So, again, those become passing the risk more to the city, because if there is not sufficient increment to pay on the obligation for the developer, it then kind of falls on to the city to make up that difference in revenue. And then, I, I know I've talked a little bit about, at the, at the roundtable, but tax abatement. I often think that tax abatement is a bit of a misnomer, because it, it, it kind of gives the intuition that, that a property owner has to pay less in taxes, that we're abating their actual taxes that they paid. I like to think of tax abatement as it's actually kind of just TIF-light. Oftentimes, cities use it for projects that provide an economic development benefit and that have an identified need, and either don't qualify for tax increment for a redevelopment district and/or the amount of financing is, is less than, than necessary to, to establish a district. Because essentially, we can only, in abatement, we only capture the city's portion of the property tax. The school district and the county would have to separately approve tax abatement for their own tax authorities. And we would be capped at fifteen years of term on this. We would have to show that there's an economic benefit associated with the, the costs that we're incurring. And it needs that, again, defined public purpose. And it would include the ability to pack, pay debt service on any sort of bond we had issued. But again, abatement is most used, and most effectively used, when there's a project that increases taxable market value. Then we can capture that value to then abate, provide in that abatement agreement that we would have with the developer. And as I said, it would require separate approval from the county and the school district separately. So, when looking at this, because we have the ability under the legislation to, to, to approve a redevelopment district, there's not a huge use for tax abatement in this situation, because we have TIF available to us, and it's a much more nimble, flexible, and a better tool fitting the, the source here. So, just, you know, we're not requesting any action from the, the council tonight. We were just wanting to provide this update to you and some of the background. I think as we move forward, these will be kind of the, the considerations for the council and EDA to kind of understand the roles and responsibilities. We're not developer, and, and we know that, and we've heard the council speak that, that I think we are here to support the development community and the ownership groups out there in investing in that center, and we stand ready to do that. But we're here as kind of the activator and supporter of the site. Council will obviously determine the outcomes, or what the public purpose would be on any sort of assistance. Ultimately, the council will need to assess and decide on any risk that would come with the assistance package, reviewing and analyzing our public finance policy. I think an important, another important piece is evaluating the private partner. There's actually pieces in our development tools policy that talk about history of success in projects, ability to, ability to perform, you know, just having a trust between the city council and any sort of development partner and assistance application, that you trust that relationship and that you believe that they can perform on it. And then know that the final decision on establishing a TIF district is, is fully within the council's discretion. And I, I think as we do that, we will wanna be thoughtful and strategic. Because as soon as we establish a TIF district, we will start the clock on essentially the term of the district. So, if we establish a district too soon, and projects don't happen for years out, we will have kind of lost the, the first years of capturing that tax increment and impact our financing ability on the front end. So, we will certainly review projects as they come in to see when the timing makes sense to establish one or more districts within the mall area to help support redevelopment and to support some of the investments that the council has, has anticipated out there. So, again, we're not requesting any action from the council tonight. Just wanted to bring back an overview of the tools available to you, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Jeff, I think that was well done. I think that was well done. It's very good to, to get a refresher on all of this. And that, just for clarification, there are many E D A tools. We had to go to the legislature to get the authority for the mall. However, for other redevelopment districts, like the Sterling site where Cub is, we don't have to go to the legislature. We already have the authority to certify that as a TIF district. And I think it's the same thing if we did the Difly in 13 property, because it's a redevelopment. We don't have to get legislative authority, because we have the authority already to do a redevelopment there.
Mayor and council, correct. The city has the full ability to create redevelopment TIF districts that meet the statutory requirement for establishing a redevelopment TIF district, which is kind of the Blight standard.
Yeah.
If it meets the substandard building standard, you are allowed to create a TIF district. It doesn't require approval by the state. It doesn't require approval by the county, the school district. You have individual authority to do that. The special legislation from the state essentially says, this redevelopment district qualifying standards have automatically been met for Burnsville Center. So we don't have to worry about meeting the coverage and the building substandardness. We automatically will qualify for a district. But that's not, state legislation or state approval is not customarily required on establishing a TIF district.
And the other nice thing about getting the authority for the mall and also for the Minnesota River Quadrant is that we don't have to certify a district right away.
Correct.
And we can certify it project by project, so that First Inn does it, you don't have to certify the whole project, so First Inn gets a lot of the money and Last Inn gets none.
Correct.
Or very little.
Correct.
Yeah. So that, that was the beauty of getting that kind of legislation for the, for the mall and the Minnesota River Quadrant TIF authorization. Okay, all right.
You know, I know this is kind of like outside of it, but being a citizen in here, with your Burnsville Center, there's three things that chat my heart. When I go in there and I walk around that building, there's trash there a lot.
Yeah.
Too much. When I walk the halls, the carpet looks like something that the Party Central went through. And three, when you walk in that building, you have a dining mall, perspective up, but yet you have in Gordmans, this beautiful Asian restaurant and store. If I walk in that mall, I'm not on that side of the mall, how do I know that? How do I know that that mall is not on its way totally out? Other than maybe the picture on the wall or something up there, photograph, a beautiful photograph, say, hey, coming 2025, here it is, as I walk through there, so I know there's a reason coming back. There's a reason to keep supporting on those.
Yeah, Donna, the hard thing about that is that we're the regulators, we're not the property owner. That's their marketing piece, is what you're talking about.
Right. Unless there's a way to make incentive for them for the marketing piece.
Yeah. We just have to encourage them to do a better marketing piece. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. I think that the last item here is Hugo's, and he's going to update us on groundwater.
Why only have 36 slides? No, I do not. I don't have any slides.
Michelle here, who has to drive to St. Cloud, is not going to be happy with your 36 slides.
Are you going to St. Cloud?
So...
Double staff going to St. Cloud.
Stop it, Val.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff were notified by the Minnesota Department of Health that we received one drinking water test result with a higher-than-normal result for radium. This test result does not mean there is a problem with our water. Burnsville's water is safe for drinking and all other uses. We are working closely with our partners at M D H to ensure that levels do not result in a violation of our, of standards. And staff are sharing a report on characteristics of our water sources, as well as our water operations, monitoring plan, and mitigation strategies. Staff will keep the community and council informed as we continue our work with our partners, and I encourage you and the community to take a look at the report included in your packet for our detailed information on this issue. More information can also be found on our website at www.burnsvillemn.gov. Drinking water management.
Okay. Anything else? And I think staff has a communication strategy to the community.
Mayor and council, yes, you have seen that. Hugo mentioned the website. We currently have information out there. Really, our purpose tonight was, we wanted to make sure that you had a complete and comprehensive brief on the issue. Fact of the matter is, repeating what Hugo said, Burnsville drinking water is safe. We certainly take this one test result seriously. We're actively working towards mitigation strategies. You'll hear more about those, as will the community. The next major touch point for the community, it just so happens that our consumer confidence, our drinking water report to the community comes out in April. Certainly, we will, we will include more information on this in that report. And between now and then and beyond, we'll be talking with you and with the community about what we're doing to, to continue to assess the situation. I think it's important to repeat that this was one test result, and we're actively monitoring. M D H will also monitor, and we'll continue to work with them to, to implement any, any sort of local mitigation strategies that we might need to, so.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And to our community members, this briefing that we received from Deputy City Manager Hugo McPhee is a letter to the mayor and council, and so that is available if anybody wants to take a look at that report. Okay, is there anything else?
Mayor, I would just add one more thing. Can't remember if Hugo said it, but radium's a naturally occurring element, part of, part of the natural groundwater supply. Radium can be managed, but it cannot be eliminated from groundwater sources. So I think that's an important, just an important fact is, we kind of continue to, to monitor and explore mitigation.
And it's no different from radon that's in our houses.
As I understand it, I am not a scientist, nor do I claim to be one, but it is basically the drinking water version of radon, the radon issue that occurs, that potentially could occur from a soil and in a...
Most often in granite and limestone rock.
You are correct. You're a councilmember, Workman.
Yeah, because, you know, it's, it's all here. It's all here. It's all here in Hugo's report. And what does Burnsville sit on?
Plenty of that stuff.
Plenty of that stuff.
That's why we're mining it.
Okay, very good. And council, we did our reports at the last meeting, so we don't need to, I don't think anybody has any updates, so if there's anything else... Yeah, I think council members are going. Yeah.
You're invited to the party, Madam Mayor, if you want to come.
Well, I know it, but it's not in the budget for me. Yeah. I know, and I would, but it's not in the budget for me, so. But...
It would drive Drake crazy for all five of us to be at L C and he not be there.
I will tell you, I will, I will miss all of you.
Yeah, because you, it's not on the budget for you, because you're going to I C M A.
I will be traveling with our O D team to make a, our second presentation around our organizational development initiatives at I C M A, which is the International City Managers' Association.
Where they meet?
That is a great question.
Texas?
Austin.
Texas.
Texas.
Austin, Texas?
Yeah.
At the end of September, early October.
Oh, it's not this weekend?
Not this week.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, staff? Are we all good? Everybody? There's nothing else? We adjourn by acclamation. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for everything that you do in service to our community. God bless you.